Good evening, everybody. We're going to start the meeting. Welcome to the February 18th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. I'll go over the agenda. Thank you, sir. Go over the agenda, which is a quick abbreviated agenda, sort of like those of us up here. Abbreviated bunch of members. Chris is sick. He did try to rally and join us, but lost that battle. Lee is away on vacation, and Mike Johns is away on vacation. Seven o'clock, we'll do citizens' input. 7:05, we've got a Mark Stopa from the Cable Television Advisory Committee is going to give us an update. 7:25, we're going to have a presentation by Ed Lawton on the Community Preservation Act. 7:45, Town Manager's Update. 7:55, Selectmen's Update and Action Items. Ed, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anybody here for citizens' input?
All right.
Seeing none? Mark, is your committee here? Are they ready to go?
Ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Mark Stopa, 118 Chestnut Street, Foxborough Cable Television Advisor Committee. I'm joined by Michael Weber, who is the Director of Foxborough Cable Access. We have, I'm pleased to report, as you saw from the documents that I submitted earlier, that we've reached a point of agreement with Comcast on the renewal of the license. I don't want to belabor, and it's obviously a fairly thick document, but I think the cover sheet that I gave you with the document really kind of sets out the things that I think ought to be illustrated tonight. We went into this, as you know, because we've been before the committee, before the Selectmen, we went in with a sense of purpose as to a number of action items. Obviously, we wanted to make sure there was appropriate capital funding. Same thing with the franchise fee. But the primary thing was to make sure that we had HD capability for our local cable channel. Stereo capability was also a big thing. Electronic programming guide, obviously, we wanted to continue the discount for the Foxborough Senior Citizens, and we wanted to make sure that the available service center was convenient to our residents. And we're pleased to report that we accomplished every one of those items, with the exception of the electronic programming guide. So that's essentially being able to talk into your Comcast remote and say, "I want to see, watch Foxborough Cable Access." We weren't able to do that. It wasn't for want of trying. It was, as we've, as has been reported back to us, it's a physical engineering impossibility. It's not, it's just the way the system is set up. We can't do it. We are trying to work and end around to that. There are some suggestions out there as to how we might be able to utilize the website to be able to report a channel guide to folks. Obviously, Mr. Weber will investigate all options there, and we'll try to get something done, because we think that that's fairly important, but otherwise not doable. So HD capability, we're getting an additional channel. We have three standard. We're now going to get a fourth channel, and that will be the HD-only channel. Stereo capability has already been instituted. Comcast Cable was good enough on good faith, and in good faith during the course of negotiations, to just work with Mr. Weber and get that accomplished. Equipment got swapped out, and in a day, or a couple of days, we had stereo capability. I also want to acknowledge that there were, obviously, more than myself and Mike Weber, this Foxborough Cable Television Advisory Committee, we worked very well together, I thought. And I would like to thank Catherine Maloney, who's the representative from Comcast, who's with us this evening, for her efforts in getting this done. It was a fairly easy process to get things negotiated to the point, and I'm told, even though I didn't have experience before, this endeavor fairly quick, quick to come to a resolution, and we're pleased with that. Having said that, I know Mr. Weber would like to make a couple of points to this Selectmen as well.
Thank you, Mark. Michael Weber, Executive Director, Foxborough Cable Access. I did want to hopefully take a few minutes to just backtrack and give a little bit of context to this current license, and where Foxborough Cable Access was and where the community really was 10 years ago. So this license that just expired was signed October 27th, 2009. At the time, Foxborough Cable Access was desperately seeking a home. So you may have recalled newspaper articles talking about FCA's search for a home. And that, quite honestly, was a real struggle for us. We're a volunteer-based nonprofit organization with, you know, limited resources, and at the time, there were limited affordable commercial, you know, properties that were available. And we looked at a lot. We did finally find 28 Central Street. By the way, previously, we were in the Comcast building on East Belcher Road. Gorgeous facility inside, although the location may not have been as conducive as Central Street is, so that people could find us and interact with us. But during the last license negotiations, one of the things that Comcast came forward with was that they were moving in a different direction and needed us to find another home outside of that building. And so we did find 28 Central Street. And from a strategic standpoint, I did just want to highlight that the FCA Board of Directors did take some time and effort to negotiate a good situation there. So originally, it was only available for lease. And we were nervous about that, given that leases expire, rates go up, or maybe, you know, they ask you to find a new home. Television studios are expensive to build, and we were aware that trying to go through this process twice, we didn't have the funds to be able to do that. And so we were able to successfully negotiate the purchase of, with a mortgage, the 28 Central Street location. And it's worked out very well for us. Being centrally located has made it easier for our volunteers and just the general public to interact with us. We're more visible within the community, right there on the main street. So it's worked out well. The other thing that happened 10 years ago, a lot of towns were dealing with this issue of INETS. And a lot of people may not be aware what an INET is. It stands for Institutional Network. At that time, cable companies were maintaining and providing, like, a secondary cable network around town that allowed the interconnection of, like, backhauling live Selectmen and School Committee signals, and maybe a sporting event, and even the channels going to Comcast. And at that time, the system was aging. It was a maintenance issue, and they were looking to get out of INETS. To the town of Foxborough's credit, they had already built out a fiber network, the municipal fiber network at the time. So that allowed the transition from a cable operator-owned infrastructure to a town-owned and maintained fiber network. So that's what we use today. That allows us to do meetings like what we're doing tonight live. We actually have folks up at the high school right now covering basketball, also going out over that same fiber network. So those were two huge challenges, and Mark alluded to the fact that, you know, this process went faster this time than previous. There were a lot of big issues on the table, and Foxborough was, Foxborough Cable Access was a bit nervous about, you know, our future 10 years ago, given the move and everything else. In terms of the funding that has been provided to Foxborough Cable Access through the license, over the past 10 years, beyond building out the construction of a new television studio, the purchase of the building, I just wanted to highlight a couple of quick highlights. Certainly not all of them, but some things that we've done around the community. So we support a high school, it's called a Communication Arts Class, a video production class at the high school. We've been doing that since the '80s. And during this license, during this contract, we were able to upgrade all that equipment, again, in collaboration with the school department. They did a lot of, we actually had to reconfigure the design of the rooms, put in doors that weren't there before, fresh coat of paint, new lighting. And we provided the design, equipment purchase, and install of all the television equipment for that class. We did the same for the Hearn School. I think that's within the past 10 years, that the Hearn School actually broadcasts their morning announcements as a TV show, and it goes internally within the school building. And Dan Williams is the teacher down there that administers that class. And it's all done using equipment that Foxborough Cable Access purchased and installed. We also installed a TV control room similar to what's here at the Boydson Library. We have dedicated cameras that are used by the senior center to cover their events. And we also installed a control room at the high school gym. So we've really kind of expanded our reach over the past 10 years, beyond what used to be the TV truck that would drive all around town. We now have facilities within some of these buildings, and that really, really makes a difference when it comes to volunteers being willing to help you out if they don't have to spend three hours before an event, setting things up and taking things down afterwards. So we have a facility now at the high school gym. And as a side note, we've had a number of high school students take advantage of these resources. I just had made a note about Brady Gardner, who graduated a few years ago. He started volunteering with us when he was in the seventh grade in 2013. And even at that time, he had a real interest in gaining skills in sports broadcasting. And he stuck with it from seventh grade, and he volunteered with us right through his senior year. He's now at Boston University. He came back, and when the football team met at the Fenway Park, he was more than willing to come back and help out with that coverage. And we were actually able to do that live, and that was huge. He's, Brady's now gone on. He's actually been doing some stuff with Nesson. So he's on track with a nice career. Chris Kelly is another former volunteer. He's now working as an engineer with a system integrator in video and TV production. Jess Todd went to Michigan State. In high school, he was sort of like Brady, interested in sports broadcasting, did a lot of coverage with us, and is now working at ESPN. So high school students certainly do take advantage of, you know, and even middle school students, take advantage of some of the things that we have to offer and use it as an opportunity to gain some skills in a less stressful environment than, you know, college or professional environment. So today, we're in a much different situation with this contract. We have a home. Our strategy of purchasing the building worked out. We're not in a situation where we have to worry about, when's the lease expire, those kinds of things. We have a strong and healthy volunteer base. At the beginning part of this process, there was a public hearing. It actually goes back to 2017. And we had a huge outpouring of support, all seeking high-definition public access channels. That truly has been kind of one of our big thrusts and asks of Comcast, is to get a high-definition channel. I feel that most people, when you're flipping through the channels, especially in the year 2020, if it's not in HD, you might not be watching it. And so that was a big push, and that's a huge win for Foxborough Cable Access. We're hoping that gets us back in front of people's normal, you know, viewing habits. And certainly, all of the equipment that we've been installing over the past 10 years has all been HD equipment, and so we're ready to move forward with that. And so I just, I just wanted to, you know, again, take a few minutes to mention some of those highlights. The license does afford us some operating and capital revenue for the next 10 years, so that we can continue to do this. And yet, we remain a fairly small, volunteer-based, you know, volunteer organization that just takes, you know, a lot of pride in what we do. And the volunteers push themselves to do the productions in a professional manner and meet those high standards. So that's what I just wanted to share.
Okay, circling back to me. The reason we're here tonight is to have you vote on the renewal contract and sign off on it. So with that, that's our ask. Any questions you have? Happy to answer them.
Got a couple. One, could you reintroduce the Comcast representative that's here?
Sure.
Catherine Maloney. Oh, okay. Didn't recognize you. I figured that was you, but, thank you. And how many volunteers do you have at any given time?
It varies significantly. Like, tonight at the basketball game, we literally have just, like, high school students coming in, and they may only help us out once or twice a year. But then I probably had, there's probably a core 30 to 40 volunteers that help out on a sort of regular basis. Yeah.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, so early on in the process, when you came before us, it wasn't looking too good.
No, I remember that.
There was concerns about funding and everything else. So I'm happy that you came to a resolution fairly quickly. It takes two to make that happen, so I want to thank Comcast for participating in that. And if you look back over what you've accomplished in the last 10 years, not that I want to put you on the spot, but what are some of your goals for the next 10 years? It's not like anybody's watching or anything. Seriously, though, what do you foresee for the next 10 years in terms of this contract?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're always looking to, I think we always have an outreach issue, and so there's always an opportunity, some, we've actually literally had people say to us, we thought everybody got paid at Foxborough Cable Access, that, oh, you're out covering this event and that event, and you're getting paid. I think we want to make sure that people understand who we are and what we do, continue to expand our educational opportunities to train people. Because at the core of what we do, you know, I cited some examples of students going off and getting careers. But at the core of what we do as a public access station, it's really an extension of people's First Amendment rights. So really, anybody can walk in the door, produce a program that they want to talk about, and really create some community dialogue around that. And so expanding that, we are very aware that local news continues to be under some tight constraints financially, local newspapers and radio. And we're, we continue to have conversations on how we can help in that area. You know, training volunteers and providing some more community, maybe very short-style, under-five-minute-type programming, that's little news bits, to keep people updated on what's going on in the community and the little conversations that are happening that people might not be aware of. And then continue to do what we've been doing that's worked well, the collaborations with the school department and town departments. We have a relationship with almost all of them, but to continue that.
Thank you. Good job. Yeah, I do remember to echo Dave, the last time you came in, it was certainly a lot more doom and gloom, and what a great turnaround.
Well, we were certainly have some, having some difficulties trying to accomplish what we had set out as our goals. And we knew when we set those goals that they were very, they were going to be very challenging, just considering the landscape and the way cable television and cable TV providers were interacting with towns. But quite frankly, we remained insistent that that's what we needed to do, and for a lot of reasons, I think in part our insistence, but also our creativity, and some changes in the landscape, and the willingness of Comcast to entertain things that they weren't previously ever interested in doing. So it kind of all came together. So I feel that we're very fortunate, and I think the town of Foxborough is very fortunate, because what we've been able to get will ably serve the needs of Foxborough Cable Access and the town.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think, I want to just say that I think Mark's being modest in saying that this was a relatively easy process. It's a long process. And I think that if you've never done one of these, it takes a lot of effort. It's not just a simple contract renewal. It's a long, it's a process by nature, because it's actually laid out in the state statutes and the cable licensing provisions. But it takes literally years to do this. And as Mike pointed out, this actually started in 2017 with the initial hearing, and Catherine's been involved in a lot of these, but she said to me earlier tonight that this was actually one of the better ones that she's been able to do. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that you collectively did to make this happen, because it is not an easy, it's not a simple task to do this. And I really do appreciate the work that was put into it.
All right, Ed, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed cable television renewal license between the town of Foxborough and Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC, for the term of February 1st, 2020, to January 31st, 2030.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I also have a secondary motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the proposed agreement for a discount available to eligible Foxborough senior citizens from Comcast Cable Communication Management, LLC.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
What's the nature that's been discussed?
The nature is, that's a, that's something that doesn't actually show up in the actual contracts, but it is something that Comcast is willing to do for the town of Foxborough. And the easiest way to facilitate that was to have a side agreement letter, and that's what was presented to you there. And that's Comcast being cooperative with the town of Foxborough by continuing that senior discount that they have since at least the last contract.
Okay. Thank you. And how would senior citizens go about getting that if they didn't know about it? Or have become senior citizens since the contract 10 years ago?
I don't know the answer to that, Catherine, do you?
You just have to call.
Call, okay. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, all those in favor? All right.
Super. Actually, we have a signature page. There's two copies of it. I think one for your records and one for us. It would be appreciated if you'd do that.
Right now?
Please.
Okay.
And thank you.
All right. No, thank you. Great presentation, too. Thank you. And thank Comcast. There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. 7:25, we've got Mr. Lawton, if you want to come on up. Going to make a presentation on the Community Preservation Act. Should we do a background on this, Bill?
We do. This information in your-
No, no, but I mean, do you want to say something?
Well, sure. Just by way of introduction, I met with Mr. Lawton last week, and we were in talking about a few other things, and this particular topic came up. And he noted that the Community Preservation Act has actually been in place in the Commonwealth for probably, for a good 10 years, I would say now. And-
Fifteen.
Maybe, oh, long, okay, so 15 years. So what's happened, what happens with that is that it's an act which is adopted locally by each individual community. And right now, Massachusetts, about 176 communities have adopted it. And there is a, it's a process by which the community can actually agree to tax itself by an amount, I think, up to, up to 3%. Usually, I think it usually comes around 1%, 2%, or 3%. And what happens is that that amount can actually put in, then be put into a fund, which then gets matched by the state. And the state, just in this recent years, this recent past year, they actually increased the amount of funding for that particular program, because it's quite popular. Now, what's significant about the Community Preservation Act is that it actually allows cities and towns to focus that funding for recreation purposes, for open space purposes, for affordable housing, for things which are in historical preservation projects, which in this town has been a challenge for a number of years. I know that the Historical Commission, for a number of years, has been trying to preserve certain properties, but really didn't have the resources to do it. So I know that it's really important to a lot of folks that we do stuff like that, but yet we haven't had the resources to really generate towards that. So open space is a really important thing. We do have, fortunately, here in Foxborough, we do have a lot of open space. But I don't think that we do probably enough, because we haven't spent a lot of resources, on making good use of those open spaces. For instance, building trails, making, using, and developing passive and active recreational opportunities on those parcels. Our other recreational opportunities can be enhanced by using this money. And more recently, the discussion has been town-wide about how can we provide more affordable housing for residents who want to live and locate here in Foxborough. And as we know, it's a challenge to do that. So this is a resource which I think can touch a lot of different bases. And I think it's, when Mr. Lawton raised the issue the other day, I said, I think it's really important that you present this topic to the board, so that they can then decide if it's something that is worthy of further consideration and discussion, and possibly even developing a subgroup to start looking at it. So with that, inter-
Thank you. This was a, I was discussing things with him, and this was a by-the-way, so now I'm here doing this. And so, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I believe it, this is Chapter 44B. I believe it was included in your packet. As it was mentioned, it's a surcharge on a tax bill. Should somebody get a $5,000 tax bill, a 1% surcharge would be, I believe, $50. You can have it at 2% or 3%. Many towns do 1%. And that's part of what the state's going to match, that, we're just going to say that, $50. The state collects money at the Registry of Deeds for a bank lends money. They apply a lien. There's $10 or $20 that goes into the fund. The bank gets paid off. They release the lien. Somebody does a mortgage. Those kind of monies are collected by the registrar and turned into the State Community Preservation Fund. It can go for, as it was mentioned, affordable housing managed by the town, kind of like Baker Street there, historical preservation, open space. It even mentions wellheads. I mean, you can use this money from this fund for the purpose. If it's a land acquisition or whatever, it has to be registered with a deed. That property can only be used for that purpose from then on. There are some aspects of that. Section 3, there is a Section B, and a B and one half. Section B is, we need to accept sections 3 through 7 of this 44B. The process would be that this select board would approve it, and then it would go to a ballot question. A state ballot has to be a longer notification. A municipal ballot, shorter notification. The 40B and a half needs study. There are a number of income streams in there that I'm not familiar with the terminology of it, which would increase the pool of money that the state would match out of their collected funds from the Registry of Deeds and so forth. When this legislation was going through, I had the impression of it. I'd been in the State House a few times. I had the impression that it was a tax on the sale of property, but I cannot find that in there, so I'm not going to tell you that's that. I'm going to tell you it's probably not on the sale of property. But it is- But it is recording deeds and so forth, it is. So there's an opportunity to collect more money in our municipal pool from Section B and one half. But I don't understand those income streams, and I can't endorse that to you. You should study that, please. And then just below that, in Section 3, there are four exemptions there. People that are eligible for low-income housing would not have to pay that surcharge on their tax bill. And three types of, now, two types of commercial properties get a $100,000 exemption from the surcharge. And residential real property, they get an exemption from the first $100,000 of it. So, you know, I'm sure there's some properties that go up to a million, but I don't know what the mean average property is, but it might be $750,000 per home, I don't know. So you're talking about a $75 collection from each community, each person. And what those people would get for that surcharge would be preserved historical places, more places like the Lane property opened up, maybe even purchases of more open space. We're all getting older, some of us need to go into that over 55 or over 65 type living like on Baker Street. You could expand that. You can basically utilize this money on things that you might have otherwise spent your own money on before. I had the opportunity to speak with a selectman from Weston, who had been a selectman for 20 years, currently a town moderator. They adopted it very early on. It's a wealthy community, not quite a good comparison to us. They went for the 3%. They're currently bonding a $10 million. They have quite a bit of the money, they have to bond another $2 million or something. Assisted living, you know, old folks housing. And that's not their first project of big money. You know, the makeup of the municipal committee would be somebody from the Historical Commission, Conservation Commission. The exact words would be Housing Authority person and several other people. It would be run like any other commission, needs to have a quorum. It would make recommendations to yourself. First year of it, the municipality would have the opportunity to take up to 5%. They would get the software and the materials to do these calculations, collections, and so forth. There is an opportunity, you can back out, there's an opportunity, you can increase that percentage from 1% to 2% to 3% or whatever, or from 3% to 2%. Weston tried to reduce it from 3% two different times, and it got voted down at town meeting to do so. I think this is a great opportunity for this, for this town. If we'd have gotten into it earlier, there would have been monies collected by municipalities across the state that were not participating, and therefore our monies would be greater. You say 171, you said, are in it now?
176.
176, that's just about half of 151.
Yeah.
A little more than, 351.
351.
Yeah. So I think it's high time. By happenstance, we have Historical and Concom here. I am sure they would be willing to support this. I would, I would appreciate your support and your study of some of this thing to get it going. And I'm sure myself as a citizen, and I'm sure the Concom and the Housing Authority and the Water Department and the Historical Commission could all muster support at a town meeting, should you be interested in something like that. So I'm going to thank you for your time and your consideration. And if you have any questions, Mr. Keegan knows probably as much about his life. But he doesn't have my perspective.
I liked how you hinted that one off there. That was pretty good, actually.
You may not have my perspective, but thank you.
No, well, thank you for your presentation. Any questions from the board?
No, I think it's, I think it's something we should definitely look into. I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I think probably a subcommittee to do a little bit more research and, you know, get a list of frequently asked questions put together. The people are going to have to ask because of the surcharge.
Right.
You know, what's it going to cost the average taxpayer?
Right.
But I think it's money well spent, big picture wise.
You've been leaving money on the table.
Yeah, I understand that because of the match, but, you know...
Town of Weston got it. You want them to get yours next year?
Listen, I'm in support of this. So you're preaching to the choir, but there's a lot of people that...
It's got to be sold.
Right, that's why I'm saying, put a subcommittee together and put a list of frequently asked questions together, so you have the answers when the questions are asked, so...
I was informed that Concom did know about this. Do you guys just want to, in the interest of not reinventing the wheel, do you think it's a good idea we do a subcommittee? Or do you guys have any thoughts on what you guys know already?
I think it's long overdue.
It's long overdue. Okay.
It is part of our open space and recreation plan goals.
Do you want to come up here, just so people can hear you at home?
Having the CPA passed is part of, is one of the goals of our open space and recreation plan. So we did discuss it, and Mr. Lawton was at the meeting when we did our public survey for the open space plan. And so we discussed it briefly then. It just has not gotten started, so I think putting together a committee to try and get it going, we can also get help from the state. They have people that can assist you in doing that. So we would have to determine in town what type, you know, what level we would want to go for. It can actually be 1%, 1.5%, 2% or 3%. And then, I guess, get it on the ballot, do a lot of education, try and explain to people that, you know, money is going out of the town, it's not coming back through the deeds, you know, through recording deeds. I think Foxborough, I think it was about $60,000 last year.
That's correct.
That went out and doesn't come back. So that's funding the CPA fund in the state. That's what they're using the money to give back to the towns. I do want to make one correction. When this all started, it was 100% match. At this point in time, it is not 100% match. They have a formula that they do. They were running out of funds because real estate went down, so at the time that Governor Patrick was in office, he actually came up with more funding from a different fund to supplement. But now they have a formula that they apply. But you're getting money back still.
Right.
It's money that, as Mr. Lawton says, is on the table, that you're not getting back. So the other thing is, I can answer your question about why you thought it was real estate. It actually, when this all started a long time ago, it was actually Nantucket that started this idea. And what they did is they did 2% on the sale, on real estate sales. So that's where that came from, but then...
Oh, I didn't forget it, it was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, but now...
It's not here.
But now it's been formalized in this process through the state. So the money that we do get back goes into a fund, and it's administered through the Community Preservation Committee. And you can spend 10% on each of the categories, you have to spend 10% on each of the categories. That's open space, recreation, housing, and historic. And then the 70% that's left over, you can determine how you want to spend it. It's my understanding that it, projects actually are approved at town meeting. So this is money that the people in town have the opportunity to decide what kind of projects they want.
That's right.
So it puts, it puts the actual decision-making authority into the hands of the citizens of Foxborough, which is a nice thing.
Well, yeah, they're paying for it, and they're...
Yes.
They got a say in it directly.
Exactly, exactly. So it's, it's not really, I mean, I don't know the terminology, I wouldn't necessarily call it municipal funds in that it is not going to be determined how those funds are going to be spent by the government, by the town government. It would be the townspeople.
Got you. Oh, that's a huge point.
Now, the formulas that they do equalize us with wealthy communities. The first round is kind of a, 80% of the funds go out as a match. Then in the second and third rounds, they take your population into consideration, your average income into consideration, things like that. And it would give Foxborough, compared to Weston, an advantage, and, you know, Taunton would have an advantage over us, I'm sure, and things like that. Hope nobody hears from Taunton. Maybe Taunton's got more money than I think, but...
Mr. Chairman, I can just think of at least three projects during the past year that we could have used funds on this, that have come up and have become public issues. One is common preservation, in terms of doing improvements to the common. The other one's affordable housing. And the other one is historic preservation, which have, you know, have been very big issues and which have been very difficult to address from a town perspective because of how we can dedicate funds in the competing interests of our public uses. So I think this is actually a really good approach to doing that, helping that, because those monies are dedicated specifically for those kind of purposes.
And if we get going, and we foresee, and you take some parts of Section 3B and a half, and get more than $60,000, you can, you don't have to, but you can bond against future income from the community fund. So you don't have to wait till you get the $50,000 to renovate something. You, you know, so...
Well, that's a great presentation. I think we'll definitely get a subcommittee together and look into this further, absolutely, with all the interested parties as having a say.
So to put it in perspective a little bit for Foxborough, this is a year outdated, but when this came up at one of the open space plan committee meetings, we looked into it, got some facts, and you guys might get this piece of paper every year, but it says what the town of Foxborough has paid into the fund, and usually it's $58,000, $60,000. So that's being paid into the fund at the Registry of Deeds, regardless of whether we adopt the act or not. Then they do for us a projection. So what they have determined is that the average single-family home value for the town of Foxborough is $441,000. And then, as Judy said, you choose, if we adopted it 1%, 1.5%, 2% or 3%, you can opt out the low-income housing, and you can also opt out the first $100,000 value of property. So this doesn't change the actual value of the property in any way, but if you take the first $100,000 off, then if we adopted, say we use the average single-family home value of $441,000, and we took off the $100,000 and exempted the low income, at 1%, it would be a $50 surcharge per year. At 2%, it would be 99, and at 3%, it would be 150. If we started at the lowest and did the 1%, the revenue that the town would generate a year would be $375,000 for Foxborough, based on our figures. So we would generate $375,000 in town. And then if you adopt less than the 3%, you only get to participate in round one of payback from the state, but that first round is now equal to the same percentage that you've contributed. So we would also get that amount of money back. So right now, the $60,000 that we're paying is going to other communities because we don't have this act, whereas, you know, if we adopted the act, then it would come back to Foxborough. So really, the Open Space Plan Committee, just cut to the point of fact-finding, you know, just trying to get some data that we could share with people, and that's really as far as we've gone with it.
Okay. No, we'll go further. We'll get a committee together.
I'm very glad that I said, by the way, what about this?
Yeah. What he said, I just, you know, it was perfect timing. We appreciate you doing that.
And we had a meeting about the agenda, just, what, 10 minutes, 15 minutes afterwards.
That's right.
Said, we've got to add one more thing onto the agenda for today.
Thank you, I'm glad you did.
Yeah, so you coming before I met with them was fortuitous, instead of after. We're two weeks ahead.
It's raining, not snowing out there now.
And it's raining.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Jack Altlet, town historian, just a couple of points, and it's interesting, the name of this program is Community Preservation. It benefits the cross-section of people in this town. It is truly a community embrace. And, but just so you're aware, there are other things that have helped us out a great deal. For example, the Manpower Employment Act, historic restoration on the outside, creating jobs on the inside. That's how they did the hatch shop on Bird Street, that beautiful restoration on the exterior and very, very busy commercial interior. All of the original buildings at the Foxborough State Hospital were done under that Manpower Employment Act. Very excellent restoration exterior, many jobs inside. We also have, over the years, had the joy of a local bank that agreed to special rates on loans for any home that the commission would rate as historically significant. And that bank isn't with us anymore, but we're working on another one to do that. So it just gives us the opportunity to approach all of these things. And every, every resident benefits in some way, directly or indirectly. It's a better community in which to live. And when you take the components of this, of the housing and the conservation and all of these different groups who would benefit from this money, we all have our own support system, if you will, of people interested in those items, and as a family effort, we could prevail upon them to agree to this surcharge, which is very fair. And we know it's going to be spent locally and on things that we approve of.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Jack. All right, we'll keep in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you read this one more time? You say the third, second, third round, people Weston, 3%?
All right. Town minutes is updates.
So, good evening, everyone, and just a couple of things. Earlier, just a reminder that next Tuesday night, we're going to be doing the financial presentation to everyone on the 25th. The meeting is actually going to be held here now, it's going to be at 7:30 instead of 7:00. There's voting, early voting here until 7 o'clock, so we'll have to break the room down and get it ready for the meeting here at 7:30.
Sorry, could you guys bring it outside?
Nice to see you.
So it looks like, it looks like that we've been able to prevail upon everybody. This should be a good time, and I think a good time to have it for everybody. So I think we'll get a pretty good attendance at that night on the 25th. This afternoon, I had a meeting of the South, of the Semerick Water Directors, and just a reminder that tomorrow night is another meeting updating the various towns on where we are with Semerick and the progress that we've been making, which is significant in that regard. We have, on two fronts, the financial front is that the state has agreed to work with us, to provide us with some additional funding for, in terms of grants, which will essentially pay for... some additional funding for, in terms of grants, which will, will essentially pay for our programs in full for the, for the next three years and 50% in year four and a quarter and 25% in year five. So that's a significant savings for the town in that regard. The board this afternoon, though, talked about the idea of actually not entirely limiting the funding for that on a local level because when year five rolls around or year, even year four rolls around in that regard, we would, we would have a situation where we'd be going from zero to whatever it is, which is $300,000 or $400,000, just to keep the program running. So the idea would be to at least take $300,000 of that, put it into a stabilization fund for, for Semerick and then leave it there for use for, if we have to upgrade radios, things of that nature, we would at least have some funding available to do that. So it looks, either way, we should be able to save some money based upon the way it's currently set up. This year, we did not benefit by that because we were the first ones out of the gate, but actually Norton and Eastern will, will actually benefit a little bit more than we will in that regard because, like I said, this year was, was, we were the first ones out. So we won't save it, we're going to, we're going to see if we can reverse that 25% year to this year so that way we wouldn't lose out significantly. And I guess, so we gain the full advantage in years two, three, four, and five. On the other front, we are making significant progress on the building itself. The building is under construction. They've had a good winter to get some work done, so they're making good progress on the building. And the contractor is ahead of schedule at this time, which is a good, which is good news for us and good news for Norton and Eastern who are interested to get into, into the operation. By having the new facility, there are at least a half a dozen communities that we know of that are interested in actually joining Semerick as soon as we open our doors. So we'll be looking to actually expand the facility right out of the gate because things have been, have worked out, worked really, really well. I don't want to steal all of Rob's thunder for tomorrow night, but right now, we were, we've already had about 11, almost, almost 12,000 calls serviced through that facility and that's only since July. So it's, it's really working well. They've met the 98.9% response rate in terms of responding within the first three to four rings. And they're sort of really meeting all of the federal standards and the guidelines and doing a really, really bang-up job. So I want to give them a lot of credit. So, but Rob will give a full breakdown of those details tomorrow night and it should be a really interesting presentation if he can make it. The other, the other thing that was rather significant to find out today is that the Citizens Academy that Mark Craig has been putting together has, has really caught the interest of a lot, caught the interest of a lot of folks. So far, we have 52 people who've signed up for it, which is really significant. A lot of new names that I've never even seen before, a lot of folks that are regular folks that have, that have been participating for years, but want to find out more about how the local government works. And so we're very pleased to see that level of interest right out of the gate. And hopefully that through our presentations, collectively, we'll, we'll be able to really educate and provide some good sound information for the community and for anyone who's interested. On that same vein, it was this, this past two weeks, I learned that we will no longer have to, have the need to do our, our Student Government Day because the teachers are not going to be teaching civics back in eighth grade. So, which is, which is sort of an outcome of, of the work that we had done in that area collectively to really regenerate that interest. And now civics is actually going to be, starting to be taught again. So it's a good, good sign to hear that being done. So, so a lot of good news to report on, on all fronts today. And tomorrow night, we'll be giving our budget presentation, our local budget presentation for the, for the, the selectman's office, the town manager's office, and a lot of the general government functions will be tomorrow night in front of the advisory committee. So certainly if anybody, and you are posted for the meeting, so in case you want to make it, you're certainly, certainly welcome to do so. But having said that, hope everybody had a good President's Day holiday. Hope a lot of people are enjoying the school vacation week off. I know my partner in crime over here is doing it, doing quite that, just that at this point. And so I want to wish him, I believe, has a really good time during the time off. Other than that, we're on to what you have.
All right. Selectmen's update? Anything?
I, I, just notation. I attended a hate crime symposium that was put on by the Boston Office of the Federal Government. And I was pleased to see that Chief Grace had assigned not just one officer that, from a department, but actually two people to be able to prepare a response should we have incidents of hate crime develop in our community. Detective Mark Bonenberger went through the program as well as Court Officer Kerry Kilroy. And I was pleased to see, again, Chief Grace taking advantage of this opportunity. I've been working as part of a small group because the governor has demanded that every community in the Commonwealth have at least one civil rights officer. And I've been working on a group at the Training Council about developing a curriculum that that group would be going through. So that's just.
No, thank you. Good update. Dave? No, and I'm, I'm, got nothing else to say either. So we'll move into action items.
Motion to approve a donation to the Council on Aging/Human Services Department from the Foxborough Historical Society for the Rendezvous with Rachel Revere Program in the amount of $240.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the November 12, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
You said 8 o'clock, right?
You did. Five of them. There we go. Good night, everybody.